Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Okay, would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
There's hope in my crease.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 16th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We have Government Day today, so we have a lot of young faces in the audience and with us up here, too. I have Alyssa Lowstetter, is that how you say that? And she's in 11th grade at Midview, Midview High School. And Ted?
I have Matthew Bremke, a freshman at Oberlin. It's his second year, he's back with me, so I guess he's gonna serve the term with me, so, well, next year after, so.
He must like you, I don't know why.
I think he likes Tony.
Likes Tony.
Danielle Heffernan, she's at Amherst Junior High, and she's a freshman, right? 8th grade, I'm sorry, she told me that, 8th grade.
Ted's student's gonna help him promote our Dog of the Week today. Aw, he wants to lay down.
Hi, I'm Matthew Bremke, and this is a golden retriever mix. He's 1 to 2 years old, cage number 12. He's available for adoption, 1117, '06. Thank you.
He even has Amherst Comets colors on.
Course you can take him home, Matt.
You have enough dogs. Okay, our thought for the day, "Education is what you get when you read the fine print, experience is what you get when you don't." We're gonna move on to certificates, who has those, Betty?
Betty has those. We have two ladies, two Lady Panthers here today, Ashley Herrick and Jacqueline Salmon, and we're honoring them for their joint win at the 2006 Ohio State Tennis Doubles Division II competition. Ashley is the daughter of Jim and Mary Herrick, and she went on to state from the district championship. And Jacqueline Salmon is the daughter of Robert and Jenny Salmon, and she also went on to state from the district championships. And with them this morning, girls, where are you? Come on down. And with them is Amy Butler, from Lurie Catholic High School. Welcome, ladies.
If you want to step over to that podium over there, if you want to say anything.
Can you line up again in the middle, so he can get you on the camera? He can't get you over there. If you want, no, maybe you guys can switch on and off, there's a couple of them, so.
The next awards.
Lorraine County Preservation Network, along with Commissioners, has developed a historical landmark program designed to recognize historic sites and structures in Lorraine County. Marilyn Frederick and Mr. Bill Bird is here today.
Thank you.
Good morning.
We'll do them, and I would just, can we have one of the two of you, one of the three of you, excuse me, come up and hand the plaques to our recipients? Oh, okay.
Probably our president.
Okay, Lori, there we go, good deal. And as Teresa said, this was a program developed by the two, the Lorraine County Preservation Network and the County Development Department, the Commissioners, to recognize historic sites. And I did bring applications today, and there's, and with my card, and they're on the back table there. So, this is our freshman class, these are our first recipients. We're hoping that today's presentation will help get the program the kind of publicity it needs to recognize the important sites. And as you may have read, we had a historic site tour in September, and it was very successful. And we had close to 2,000 people go on the tour, and many of these, three of our sites today were on that tour, and we're hoping to do another one next year. And we much appreciate all the cooperation the Commissioners have given us in making this program possible, because without you, we wouldn't be here. My first recipient is Avon Isle, and Jack Smith is going to receive, to accept a plaque. It is owned by the City of Avon, and it was built in 1926. It's a neoclassical-style building that was built as a dance pavilion where big bands of the era played. Since then, the site has served for the community for a variety of recreational uses. It's just a really nice place, sort of in a little island right there in Detroit Road. You don't know it's there, you'll miss it, it's great.
But I know it's there, my parents used to dance there, and so did my husband and I.
Oh, I was gonna say your parents, I was gonna say, good, Betty, you're not gonna have to confess, but.
I went there, too.
And we thank you very much, Jack, for all your work to make this happen, and Commissioners, thank you. Custom plaques have been ordered, and some of them haven't come in yet, because we haven't finished design, so we're doing a little tag team here today. Second is the Thomas Folger Home, and John Early of Avon Lake is here. The home is owned by the City of Avon Lake, it was built by Mr. Folger in 1902. Mr. Folger was Mayor of Alariah and operator of a vineyard in Avon Township. He built the home as a summer residence. It was saved from demolition in 2003 by the Avon Lake Landmarks Preservation Society of which Jack, of which John is president. So we are very grateful for his work.
He was mayor of Alariah?
Yes, he was.
A summer home in Avon Lake.
Right, well, he had a vineyard in Avon Lake.
Mayor Burns here this morning? Welcome.
Oh, oh, but we invited the mayor, so you're welcome to. Okay. Our third property is the Jacob Shoup property, and we have Matt Nahorn here to receive. The property is owned by Matt's parents, Diane and Bill Nahorn. It's on Cooper Foster Park Road in Amherst. The founding father of Amherst, Jacob Shoup, constructed the first frame house in Amherst on this site where he resided and raised his family. Mr. Shoup participated in many firsts in both Amherst and Lorraine County, including the first mill, the first distillery, and the first sawmill. And I have to say that we, the history of this site is being, really, the house has had a number of changes over the year, but Matt and his parents are working very hard to restore the home as much as possible to its original appearance, and Matt has just done great research into Mr. Shoup and this property, so we are very grateful for his work.
I'm honored to receive this Lorraine County Historic Landmark plaque. Jacob Shoup has been a very important historical figure in the Lorraine County area, and founded the building's house and conserves history.
Thank you. Our fourth one is the Charleston Cemetery, Carolyn Sapkowski is going to receive. It is between 6th and 7th Streets in Lorraine, and it's owned by the City of Lorraine. This site was purchased by the Black River Township Trustees in 1828 as a burying ground for residents. While many of the grave sites and markers have been dug up, moved, damaged, all kinds of things over the site, the site is original, it's smaller than it was, but it's still there in its original site, and 32 grave sites dating from 1828 to 1880 have been identified. And through the hard work of Diane Medina, she's just really been a champ in this, and she was really sorry she couldn't be here today. These include city founders Daniel T. Baldwin and Barnum Meeker, both of whom have been, their grave sites have been located. Thank you. Fifth is the Vermillion Historic Center, we have Barb Brady here. She is a trustee of the Vermillion on the Lake Town, Lot Owners Association, which is who owns the property. It was built in 1919 by Cleveland Investors on a wooded beachfront lot, and the building was built from the trees that were felled right on the property as they cleared it. It was built as a private community center for the area's summer cottages, and was used both as a beach facility and a dance hall. And they have, they have some, it's.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have.
Do you dance there, too? Wow, what a dancing career, we'll have to investigate this, maybe we could get a, you know, we could, we could get some history out of you, just on dance halls in the county.
Don't forget Crystal Beach.
Oh, well, we need much to learn, we have lots.
I know, but we danced there, too?
Yeah, it's the one, the only one left on the lakefront, and it's just really wonderful condition, and they have, thanks to the Commissioners, they were able to put a new roof on it last year, which would, would not have happened, and the building would have been seriously threatened without that. So the Commissioners made the preservation of that building possible. And really important project. And they enclosed the ports, and that was just great. It was a wonderful project that you all made possible.
Couldn't have done it without that money.
Keep up the good work.
The last dance hall, the last testament to Betty Blair's dance career on the lake would have been lost without the Commissioners' money, so, you know, this is really important stuff. Well, Garfield Farm, Ed Herdendorf is here to accept this. It is in Sheffield, on Detroit Road in Sheffield Village, and owned by Mr. Herdendorf. This Greek Revival farmhouse was built in 1839 for Milton Garfield, a pioneer settler in Sheffield. He was a prominent citizen and active in local government. In 2000, Mr. Garfield's great-grandson, Ed Herdendorf, our hero, purchased the house and began its loving restoration. And it, the one of the things that's so wonderful about this house was that in the early 20th century, all of the details on the interior were documented, and so we, he was able to know how to restore it. There wasn't a usual guessing record, like, we think this looked like this kind of stuff. It was great, and it's a wonderful house. I haven't been there yet, you guys, but I've seen the outside, but it is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to, just, and I'm honored by the great grandfather, to have the vision to walk all the way from Massachusetts to town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have some great history here, and it's really great to be recognizing it. One, the other, the seventh member of the freshman class is not here today, and that is Lake Shore Cemetery in, in the City of Avon Lake, and no one from, oh!
Well, the mayor's here.
The mayor's here! And you own the property! Oh, I, yeah, there we go. I asked Mr. Robertson, Mr. John Robertson, the veteran, yeah, he, I asked him if he could be here, if he could get the mayor to come with him, and he just seemed a little overwhelmed. John's health is not, is not in great shape, but he is doing, continuing to do great work as his health fails. So we are very grateful to the City of Avon, of Avon Lake for its preservation of the building, I mean, for the, for the preservation of the Folger House and for the cemetery, and for your cooperation with the local VFW, who's working so hard to document the site, all of the graves that are in it, and to preserve its building and the quality of its location on the lake.
Thank you, just after comments, about five years ago, both of these sites were very much run down and in disrepair, and it's thanks to the hard efforts of community members that restored both of the sites, and they're both next to each other on the lake shore, and it's quite a tribute, they're both now on the downriver circle for all seven, and that would be four years of historical preservation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, we really appreciate that, and without, without your cooperation, this would not have been possible. Yes, it was local groups, but the mayor and the cooperation of City Council was essential to this. That's it, and so we thank you all so much. And we are really grateful for all the support the County Commissioners have given us, and for this project, and for making the preservation of some of these sites possible. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Marilyn and Bill, that was wonderful. Do you have your remarks in written form that you'd care to share?
Oh, sure, I'll share any.
Okay. I'd like to have them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
My relationship with the Commissioners is essential to this work, so, thank you both for all of that.
Resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kahlo?
I mean, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kahlo isn't here today.
Mrs. Kahlo isn't here today.
His other two wives are, is all.
Sure. She upvotes me all the time.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Commissioners, at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, I'd like to request an executive session for the specific purpose of discussing collective bargaining agreements, update you on a matter of real estate purchase, and possibly discuss a matter of ongoing litigation.
Award contract to Lake Area Electric Lorraine in the amount of $198,627 for the bridge lighting project to be paid from the capital improvement account, issued notice to proceed letter on or before December 4th, and completed on or before June 1st, 2007, and authorized County Administrator to notify the County Auditor to release, retain, and check completion of said project.
Before I make a motion on this, when the whole bridge lighting concept began in Lorraine, Laura Lorig of Lighting Concepts was in on the ground floor with us, she was the one that did the mock lighting for the bridge. It is, it is not our bridge, it is the state's bridge, we maintain the bridge, so the Ohio Department of Transportation had to get their engineers involved in order to get this process to move forward. Lake Area Electric, it's my understanding, has lighting concepts, Laura Lorig's lighting fixtures as part of their proposal. It's my understanding also that the engineers from ODOT are saying that they're not approving their fixtures. So I asked if Todd Moore from MKC could come up and explain, and I'm not sure if he's here, are you, is, is he here today?
He is. He's here.
Okay. If you can come up, please, and maybe give us an explanation as to why her, her product is not being approved for this project?
Yeah, I'm Dean Palmer with Richland Engineering. We hold a contract with the Commissioners for the design of this project. This is Todd Moore with Martup Croppes, he's a subconsultant for us. The Lake Area Electric's bid included a proposed substitution. This substitution would be for materials that, and equipment which are not other than what's specified in the plans, not exactly the same detailed equipment. Laura Lorig and her firm got involved with the contractor, and they proposed a substitution. To date, we have received some information about their equipment, some general information about their fixtures and such, but the information that we have received, which we had asked for, is not technically detailed enough to make a reasonable evaluation of, of the proposed substitution materials. And for that reason, we can't recommend that it be accepted. The cost difference that they proposed is relatively small on a percentage basis, and we can see additional engineering and administrative expenses that would be involved, that would probably nearly offset these expenses. So for those reasons, we've not recommended the substitution be accepted.
Did you want to, did you want to make a comment?
Gene Schleicher comes to our agency.
Laura, Laura, I need you to be up there, they can't hear you otherwise.
They can't actually use the other. They're over here now. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak on behalf of my company that's based in Lorraine. Gene Schleicher has come to our company, he has experienced 30 years as an engineer in the Cleveland marketplace. We are going to cut to the chase here. We did not only two mockups on the Lorraine Bridge, but one on the Vermillion Bridge. The product's performance far outperforms what is being specified. We are confident that the product will do what was originally seen at these mockups that started the whole ball rolling with the county and the city to do something with this bridge. And there's a lot of development going on down there, and it was our company that pushed forward into getting this project. As far as technical information, that is what Gene's on board for. Given his background, he can work with a gentleman to provide whatever technical information that we have not yet done. We are standing on the ground of performance. There's over a quarter million dollars in this project on the line right now. Based on what we have done in the past with the specified product and our product, we know our product will do, will do the job, as we have laid it out to do. So we would like an opportunity to either provide additional, whatever else is necessary that we haven't already provided over the course of the last two years, to the gentleman behind me, thus turning into the city, or set up a time to take product for product side by side again, and actually show you what the product does. I don't, don't think the city wants to put in their portion of their funds into a product that I can stand right here and say, I know will not do the job. I don't care if it's our product or not. If you're going to invest the time and the money, and there is a lot more time behind just the two years I've been involved in this, you want to have certainty that this product, excuse me, that this product is going to do the job. And again, whether it's ours or not, but what we're up against right now, you are not comparing apples to apples in product performance.
Laura, Laura, when you come up to the microphone, one thing that the clerk asks if you would give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just.
Lighting Concepts, 1941 Livingston Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio, 44052, and I am the owner, Laura Lorig.
Thank you. Did you want your engineer to speak on this matter, too?
We'll just make it quick, is, Todd, one of the things you need to look at is the fact that the lumen output alone of the two manufactured fixtures, that the specified product is half the lumen output, and you need to look at that, and we have done two mockups at the Lorraine Bridge, one of which you attended. Now, my background, I'm 30, 30 years of engineering, I'm a little nervous. I've spoken in front of people, but not in a county level, but 30 years of engineering, been director of my own department of electrical, I'm involved in the Illumination Engineering Society since 1988, and was at both mockups as an engineer, not as an employee on her staff. So I saw the mockups, I have photographs, I provided those photographs to you, and just on performance, and just looking at the fixtures on site, we need to, I challenge the ability for those fixtures to be able to illuminate the way ours did. I'm not putting anything against the manufacturer, but we need to really seriously look at that. And lumen output is a level of illumination, how it's, how it's measured.
It's, it's not up to the Commissioners to decide what product is used, we're voting today on Lake Area Electric, Lake Area Electric receiving this bid, so I think it's going to be up to the engineers to determine what product can or cannot be used, but I just wanted to bring this out, because I know Laura is a Lorraine County resident, her business is here, and she was involved in this, spent a lot of time, money, and effort to get, you know, get this to where we are today, so I just wanted to give her an opportunity to say, say what she needed to say. Okay? I hope you guys can work it out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we want to hear from our county administrator?
Not really.
Well, maybe you don't, but I do.
No, go ahead.
Well, thank you.
I'm teasing.
You know, this project was confusing from the start. The City of Lorraine made some promises to this business that were inappropriate and should never have been promised. I remember early on, when we started, it was indicated to me that you were going to get the work on the bridge, and I informed you that that wasn't possible without a bidding process. So as things sometimes go in the City of Lorraine, they went ahead and progressed well past where the appropriate level was, and made commitments, and when the, when the city found out the overall cost, and we partnered on doing that, we went through the proper process under the Ohio Revised Code, which was to contact the owner of the bridge, they indicated they wanted an engineering study. We took proposals from Richland Engineering, who have been our engineers for 40 or 50 years on that bridge, it's been, it's been a long time. ODOT finds them to be a agreeable firm to work with, they're very familiar with, with Richland Engineering, and they work on the bridge, so we had no problems with ODOT on that, and they were very happy we did that. We subsequently paid for a, a very large engineering study to make sure that anything we did with the bridge would meet ODOT standards. This has been taking months, because after the report was done, then we had to go through a scoping process, we had to take it back to ODOT, there were some questions on ODOT, it came back from ODOT, then there were some mockups, this is the way it goes when you work with ODOT. And then finally, ODOT agreed to a final bid specification, and we bid the project under a sealed bid because of the cost, it exceeded the thresholds of $25,000, which is our base threshold, threshold for bidding. During that process, I had discussions with the parties, and indicated that there was a, there is a method for requesting that additional materials be certified for, to be bid during that process, and I think that we conveyed that also to you during that process, and I'm not sure what the end result was on that. I'm not an electrical engineer, I, I can't argue who's got the better equipment, who doesn't have the better equipment. Our process always has been that we, we hire experts, and the experts make recommendations to you. I can't tell you that the experts have been 100% every time in every project we've ever done, there's, there's been problems often on, on occasion, but they're rare. And I don't, I can't, I can't say who's, if there's a right or wrong here, I can only say that we paid, you know, $30,000 for an engineering study, and then specifications, and we bid it, and the engineers are making a recommendation to award. The real confusion here started in the City of Lorraine, with what was done in Lorraine, and how they did mockups, and what they promised, and what they agreed to, and they had no ability all along. And I must stress that ODOT has $150,000 in this project, we have 50, the Port Authority has 25, the City has 25, and ODOT has $150,000, and this is the process that ODOT demanded. Now, ODOT is the majority stakeholder, and they own the bridge. Even if they were the minority stakeholder with regard to the funding, they would still own the bridge, and they would still tell us what to do. So if we want the bridge lit, now this is what we need to do. If we get, we get, you know, too much controversy on this, I, I would anticipate that they'll just walk away from this project, because there was some concern about the necessity of doing this in the first place, and I was glad that they partnered with us.
Gene, Todd, I've never bid any state work, I've bid plenty of government work, but what is your normal way of doing business when it comes to equal to or better than products? And what wasn't met in the criteria from Laura in her submittals?
As far as the process, the plans and specifications had a standard materials and equipment which were specified, and there is an or equal clause in there. The particular other substitute materials, there is a difference. The particular other substitute materials, there is a difference in the output of the different light fixtures. So they have to be wired differently. They have to be controlled differently. There's a different concept in how the controls are done, how's the power supplied to the light fixtures. There should probably be a different quantity, a different number of light fixtures than what's in the plant and specifications. That's why their equipment has not been considered equal materials because there would be these differences in how it's put together and such. So we have not, we've received the general information about their equipment, but we have not got the specifics on the quantity of fixtures that they would be supplying, how they would be wired, how they would be controlled.
Was that relayed to them? They didn't have things?
Yes.
Is their product, as you're looking at it across the board, going to jeopardize the integrity of the product? I'd always rather reward the local people anyway, especially if we save a few thousand bucks. So, I mean, I'm trying to ask the processes. I'm not familiar with state of Ohio bidding procedures, but I do know local governments. So, you know, what was all involved in your notification process and addendums that are submitted through?
Yeah, that was all done. Yeah, this whole project is based upon the final appearance of the lit bridge. So that, you know, it's got to have a proper number of fixtures at the right locations and the right levels of illumination and such, and the right colors. You know, there's probably comparable performance at the end. I wouldn't doubt that that could be accomplished. It's a matter of the true cost of that. I guess some of our questions lie in when they make a substitute proposal, you know, there's by nature differences from what the design of the project is.
Right, life cycle issues and maintenance, I understand that.
True, but also in the number of conduits and the way it's wired and so on and so forth. At this point in time, we're not sure that they've taken all these criteria into account and that you would be happy with the final product, that it's going to perform just as well overall, not just the fixtures themselves, but the entire project.
Is there still a chance that you can sit down with them and get whatever additional information you need in order to make this an alternative product? Or is it over? It's done?
Commissioner, if we change at this point, we're going to have to reject all the bids and start over again.
But Lake Erie Electric used her product in their bid.
That wasn't awarded, though. I don't believe it was awarded with the specified product, not the alternate.
That's our recommendation.
They bid it twice, I'm assuming.
Yes, yes.
They put in spec, and then they put in alternative with two different numbers. They were awarded based on a specification product.
That's true. That's true.
Get that clear, that's all.
Just a question for clarification. It says here, "Lake Erie Electric, Lorraine." Does that mean Lake Erie Electric is located in Lorraine, Ohio as well?
Oh, yes.
So they're a local contractor as well as Lighting Concepts?
Right, but Lake Erie Electric is the contractor. Her company is the, has the product.
Supplier of the light fixtures.
Right.
Whereas the other company, I think Corporate Locations out of Boston, Massachusetts?
So it's Lake Erie Electric, Lorraine?
I'm talking about the other product.
Both manufacturers are outside the state.
Okay. Local distributor.
We're a local agency representing that company in northern Ohio.
Okay, so you're a local sales agent, basically?
Yes.
We have a local electrical distributor involved in this. We have a local electrical contractor company involved in this. And then us as the lighting contractors' agent, which is local too.
But the contractor will be doing the work locally regardless of what product is specified. Is that accurate?
Correct.
One more question then, because again, I'll go back to my private sector experience. When a bid is awarded, are there alternates then allowed to be submitted from that GC, from the prime contractor? Would that give them the opportunity to present, with Lake Erie Electric being awarded with the product other than Lighting Concepts product, can they submit the alternate to being the awarded contractor?
I believe that's true.
That's what I thought.
Wait.
So the best bet, my recommendation, now, just my private sector, nothing as bureaucrats, is if we award to Lake Erie, they would then have the opportunity to submit an alternate product that would equal to or better than, based on whatever specifications they can get you that's approvable. Todd, Jean, I'm helping for some help here. Yes, no? You guys?
That's two on the right, and I'm waiting for two on the left.
Me too. That's what I'm asking.
I would like to speak a couple things after you.
That's fine. Let me get this clear first, though, okay?
Our recommendation is based on a lack of information. If we had more information, we could reevaluate our recommendation.
But we can still award this bid legally based on the specified product. But then the general contractor or prime could then offer an alternative product that you could look at. You don't have to approve it as an alternative, but you get to look at it, which gets them back in the playing field after the bid's awarded.
Contract.
I'm not sure of the legalities of the contract, but it seems reasonable.
Jerry, are you familiar with any of the private sector contracts? I don't, I'm sitting in a different world right here being a commissioner, but I'm trying to help out all I can, so.
Just looking at, and based on what I know, Ted, I believe you would have to stick with the specifications in the contract. If you're going to award an alternative, you would do it at this point, at the point where you're awarding the bid.
Commissioner, if we have had on occasion where another product, a product is specified and certified prior to bidding, and on our big bids, that's usually the way we go. So that everybody, the reason we do that is so that everybody has the equal opportunity to bid competitively.
On a sole product?
On a sole product, or it could be multiple products. Hopefully, we have a wide breadth of material that is specified so that we get very competitive bids. The problem with now identifying an alternative is it's changing the nature of the bid. All right, now, they went out and they-
And already increased the amount of the bid if it was still lesser than the bid.
We're always going to explain.
Okay, go ahead. I won't interrupt you.
That's okay. You're the boss. The, as, if a contractor comes back later and say we bid train air conditioning units, and that was one of the products, and they bid the train, they could come back and say, "Train's out of business, and we have another product that we want to use." We wouldn't have to go back to bid. Can we use that? But there has to be some exceptional reason, once we award a bid, that they can come back and ask for a substitution. There needs to be some downstream justification for that. Otherwise, you're, and not purposely, and for a good reason, we're manipulating the bid. Okay? So where I can, well, your thinking is very much correct. There has to be some additional justification other than we specified that we're going to do that here because now we've unmasked the sealed bid process. Well, it's a little, it may border on supplanting, so.
We explained that yesterday.
So I just want to be cautious. I think that if you award this product and this product is available to later then say, "Let's substitute it," just takes away the whole process, and I'm not sure it will survive a challenge.
I'm just asking the question if it was available.
I'm just looking for an answer just like you are, Commissioner.
Privately, we can do that. We win a bid, we can change that with an architect slash engineer on private sector work.
One of the things in the design process now, I've been with Lighting Concepts for seven weeks prior to this being in the engineering field. So I'm on the latter end of Todd's and MKC's involvement on the project. One of the things we found out when we got the bid documents was, we weren't listed. Laura and her company were involved with Todd prior to that, had sent them information. The initial design was provided from our offices through an email to them. We have a PDF file of the representative from the company we represent put together a sketch and in the concept of how we were going to illuminate the bridge. The products, it's a new product. It's called LEDs. And you've heard of LEDs. You can get it for your flashlight now, and now we have them for floodlights. Each piece, each manufacturer has something that's proprietary, meaning they can set themselves apart. If we were going to do an illumination of this bridge with conventional lighting, like metal halide, like your luminescence you have on your street, you could have three or four manufacturers listed right off the get-go, whether it's Sterner, McGraw, Lithonia, whoever. Now, with the LEDs, all new technology. So what they have done is they have only listed one manufacturer. It's proprietary. The question on the conduits, I have addressed already and meet the National Electric Code, which is something that derives the question about the conduits. I also know the author of that section of the specification by ODOT, who works for EMHT in Columbus. I've already talked to him about it. And we have some information, his recommendations that we can install it how we recommend it. And although he's a PE, I mean, he's not part of the process. It goes through Dean and Todd. But I have done my homework to make sure that what I'm talking about, I know what I'm talking about. But the critical thing is, we only had a one-name spec. As far as putting together the diagrams for them to review, we had ten days to put together the presentation. A, we didn't know we weren't listed, so obviously we had to hustle. Putting together the drawings, engineering drawings, how many weeks did they have to put together their engineering drawings? We had ten days. Okay, we know the product can do it, and we can provide those drawings for you. I've already talked to the manufacturer, interface, using the building's existing fiber optic system. You know, all those, we can meet those requirements. It's just that, you know, when you're listed proprietary, it's difficult to, and that means it's a single-name spec. They were listed single name. There are no equals. Even though we initiated the project, we showed that our product can do the work. And that's one of the things I'm bringing before the table. I'm not, I think we should have an opportunity to at least have them look at it.
I'm out of questions.
So did we determine if we pass this today that Lake Erie Electric cannot change the product?
Unless there's a substantially justifiable reason for a product substitution after the bid's awarded. And I have talked with counsel a little bit here. I think he's in agreement with the position I've stated to you that that would give the appearance of working the bid a little bit too much.
I was attempting to see if that was part of the plan.
Yeah, I understand, Mr. Kayla, and, you know, clearly you want to do what's right for somebody that's here in Lorraine County, and I know that everybody appreciates that. You have a second option, and I will state that you can reject these bids. In our bid packages, we have the term that says, pretty much for any and no reason, the commissioners can reject all these bids. But that would mean we have to go back to bid, probably go through another several months of redoing the specs, getting through the ODOT process. And clearly, we're going to have to revise our contract with Richland Engineering. We're right on budget right now. I mean, there's not a lot of movement in that. So I'm not sure how that would affect our overall costs, but there will be additional cost to reject and go back and redo the specifications, review this, and then go back out to bid. And that has, and I'm not sure, but I would have to sit with Richland Engineering and find out what their cost of doing that, and plus the cost of advertising and so forth. We were at $280,000, and we pared this down to get under the $250,000 for the total project cost. Whatever the pleasure of the boy, but I feel I need to share that information with you.
No, that was my next one, Jerry. Hang on. Thank you. I was just going to ask legal counsel, and he just answered a question talking to Jim. We could put this off until next Tuesday's meeting possibly, because we're meeting on Tuesday instead of Thursday, to look into the legalities of those substitutions, whether we can or can't.
Certainly, that's your part of it.
Or if they can get their information to Todd and Dean to see if it would ever be an equal. I mean, we don't want to expend any more money either, and we don't want ODOT to walk on us either. But I don't want to exclude a county company based on sole sourcing.
Can I ask a question for a moment?
Sure, you can ask anything.
Each one of these companies, their company's proprietary too. Okay, so I mean, they mentioned that the other company's proprietary. You're also proprietary.
That's correct.
Correct. He said all of them were.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, he did mention that.
That's the issue, is that they all are, so you call them apples and apples and apples.
The, let me ask our engineers a question. Do you believe that by next Tuesday, you would substantially change your position on this?
Are you that far apart that you don't think that anything would change by Tuesday?
There's just technical information that we need to see. I don't know if they can submit it in time for us to be able to review it.
Do you think you'd have a chance to submit what they need by Tuesday?
We will work very hard with the manufacturer to fill in the blanks of what we haven't submitted. All I'm asking, one is not to slow down the city process. Myself being involved for this two years, I know it's been a grueling process.
I really wish this city was deciding this, Lauren. We weren't.
But as professionals and adults, I believe we could sit down here. Yes, we, I mean, we're both dealing with proprietary products. But I do feel that we have the resources in sitting down with these gentlemen saying, "Okay, where do we need to fill in the blanks?" Help us do that. So we can provide the information. Again, we're professionals and adults, and yes, I'm here fighting for this project. I mean, there's no doubt about it. But we need to at least be, have the opportunity with you guys instead of phone calls and emails and hostility. To do it.
Well, see, I don't know this hostility.
No.
And we have worked very closely to keep you in the loop. In fact, we've gotten very, we have gotten very, very close ourselves with what we're not allowed to do, to make sure that you guys were in the loop.
And I'm aware of that. I thank you for that.
So, you know, we are sensitive to the needs of our local companies here. But I'm not sure if these guys are hostile. They look a little bit more docile than you do.
Well, I'm on fire right now. There's no doubt.
But I understand you're on fire. But first of all, remember, this is a county project. You keep saying city. This is a project with the county commissioners. Okay, the city is what got you into trouble in the first place. So I just want to make that clear here. You know, commissioners, I think that maybe a small review period to Tuesday would be appropriate. You know, I'm hopeful that they may be able to take a look at this. But at the end of the day, I want to tell you, if the engineers come back and they don't feel differently, my recommendation is going to be to progress forward, no later than Tuesday. The ODOT process has already taken a toll on our timeframes. I anticipated this board throwing a light switch this November, and it didn't happen because their process is lengthy. They're good partners, but, boy, I'll tell you what. We learned a whole lot of new lessons dealing with ODOT. Mr. Carney has my new, refound respect for what he does with them. So we're looking to be lighting sometime in May or June. And I really would like to stay on schedule with that, so we have a very viable project for next spring.
Can we just hold this off till Tuesday then, Teresa, and then give them the opportunity to get together? And we'll make a decision Tuesday based on recommendations.
Do you need a motion?
I could just put it for next week.
Just put it on for next week then.
Get to work, guys. Thank you, Dean. Thank you.
Children and Families Council, Amendment Resolution 06490, adopted June 22nd, approving the HMG contracts reallocations for fiscal year '07. Said amendment will reflect the following. Catholic charities is a decrease from $229,742 to $211,742.02. Emmanuel and United Methodist Church has an increase from $44,109.54 to $80,109.54. And Lorraine City Health Department has a decrease from $399,971.40 to $381,971.40.
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, Amendment Resolution 06656, adopted November 9th, instructing clerk to advertise for request for proposals for community art program. The amendment is to reflect the notice will be published in the Morning Journal on November 15th and 22nd, and to be open at 10:00 a.m. on November 29th in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room.
Still moved?
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, award contract to Charles Acres Construction, Inc., Lorraine, in the amount of $494,422 for the Broadway Taylor Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to be paid from Q construction account. Issue notice to proceed letter honored before November 30th and to be completed honored before October 31st, 2007, and authorize county administrator to notify the county auditor to release retainage completion of said project.
Still moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Award various contracts for the Westview Wastewater Treatment Plant to be paid for the Q construction account. For Breezy Valley City is the general contractor in the amount of $625,835. And VIP Electric from Nurwak for electrical, $66,175. Issue notice to proceed letter honored before November 30th, to be completed honored before September 26th, 2007, and authorize county administrator to notify the county auditor to release retainage completion of said project.
Still moved?
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, county administrator?
I have no additional reports or comments this morning, and Mr. Ann has stepped out too. to talk to our engineers for the bridge projects.
Commissioner's report? Uh, no report, Paul.
Oh, I've always got something to say. First of all, I'd like to thank our juvenile department. My son got his first speeding ticket, and I got to go see the magistrate, she did a very nice job. Thank you very much, it was very quick.
Please pocket it to him.
I think it was 98 bucks or 108 bucks, so, they did a very nice job, magistrate was very nice over there.
Now you get to go sit through the cartine class.
Now I get to go to cartines, yes. I also got the opportunity to spoke, to speak to SOAR on Tuesday, Steel Workers Organization of Active Retirees. Very nice comments, people very involved in the community. They remember the past when Lorain County was really booming, and they were asking a lot of questions about where we're going forward, and I hope I answered a lot of their questions. And I'd like to thank Dennis Will, our county prosecutor, for putting on his ethics class the other night. He brought in David Creel from the Ohio Ethics Commission. Commissioner Kowski was there. I had to leave a little bit early for Sports Bank, but it was very informative, and he does have it on DVD, so if any other elected officials couldn't make it, if you contact Dennis Will's office, you're available to get it on DVD. That's the end of my report.
Two and a half hours.
I was going to say, I thought maybe we could run the trailer to our meeting, but.
It's long.
Jim's giving me a report from the NACO prescription drug discount card program. I believe that we have 281 individuals who have enrolled through October and September, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. It's a, it's a start, it's a, we, we launched, we launched this program at the end of September, and we've had 279 folks utilize the program, and there's been a savings of about $2,500 to those folks in prescription drug costs that they would not have achieved without the program. So, looking for continued growth, and we'll do a little bit more advertising, and I think maybe we'll have one of the other commissioners do the radio spot next time, but, you know.
Well, I thought I did a pretty good job.
You, you did, but, you know, but it's two years before they run for election, but I'm sure we can make an issue out of that, too.
Can you give the percentage increase from month one to month two?
Well, Ms. Kahlo, why don't you, why don't you do that for us?
Go ahead, Betty.
Well, in September, there were two, in October, there were 279, must have been the advertising.
150%.
I think going from two to 209 is more than 150%.
You need to give that to Teresa.
Two to two, E. Oh, yeah, geez, what was I thinking?
I'd like to also.
I thought I got you on math.
Thank you, you beat me in math one time, Jim.
Take your shoes off. Tell you about commuter rail meeting that was held yesterday in Westlake. Mayor Dennis Clough was the host, together with Bob Perry, who is his director of planning and economic development, and there were about 21 people in attendance, and they looked at the proposed stations along the route, and they've scheduled another meeting for December 13th at 8:00 a.m. in Lakewood Hospital, Wasmer Auditorium. And also, this Saturday, the All-Aboard Ohio is sponsoring a fundraiser at the Black River Landing. Anybody who's interested, let me know, and I'll put you in touch with the proper person to make reservations. That's all I have.
Before we adjourn, if the people that have brought students here for Government Day, if you want to bring them up and introduce them, where's that little magic microphone?
Jim's got it.
Make sure Jim's not on the phone, though, because it wasn't.
Bring it right here.
Yeah, just have him to the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah, these guys didn't get to say anything.
Yeah, I'll give them a chance, too.
Give them a chance.
Give them the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioner Dan Bilman, Solly Waste Director. Our young lady here is a sophomore at Lorain County Community College, and Tiffany Fritsch is going to be taking her around to all our department heads, department, department people, and we've got a good day mapped out for her, so, Jennifer, would you like to say something?
It's just a great opportunity to be able to be here, and we appreciate that everyone puts up with us for the day, so, thank you.
Don't let his staff talk trash to you.
And what's your name?
What is Jennifer's last name? If you guys could do all that.
Jennifer Sherman. No relation to Mike?
No.
Okay.
Evening, or good morning, Commissioners. Ken Burkard, on behalf of Ron Nabokowski, clerk of Lorain County Common Police Courts. We have here Mason Brankie, and he's gonna, we're gonna show him around, our legal department. Today, we're down in Title, and I thought it'd be interesting to bring him up, see how the Commissioners handle business, and today was a very interesting meeting. It, I hope it provided you with a little bit of insight, but I'll let Mason introduce himself, and that's his brother up there behind you there, so.
Go ahead, Mason.
I'm in the eighth grade at Oberlin Yale School. This is my second year doing this, I really like doing this. Appreciate you guys having us do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ron Asmiany, Lorain County Engineers' Office. I have Brandy Baker, and it's Brandy with an I. She definitely did say that this morning, she's here representing the county engineers' office.
Okay, I don't like microphones. I'm a freshman at LC, and I do the university partnership with University of Akron, and I'm going into civil engineering and probably do a dual in survey, so, and I also am a Black River High School student, I'm a senior, so I do the PSEO program, so.
Well, you're in the right place.
You're a busy girl. Well, thank you, thank you all for coming.
I have a few.
You have a few?
Yeah, we already do ours. They didn't get to say anything.
This is Melissa.
Hi, Melissa, I'm a junior at Midbury High School. This is my third year doing this, pretty fun.
And tell them what you want to do when you go to college.
Oh, I, I'm not sure what I want to do yet, but probably psychology or a religion major. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, your turn, Matthew.
My turn? All right. I'm Matthew Brankie, Mason's my younger brother, go to Oberlin High School. Questions?
What do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to own my own business. Other than that, I don't really know.
A floor carpet covering business?
Hey, you want my carpet business?
Danielle?
I'm Danielle Halford, and I go to Amish Junior High School, and this is my first year here, and I think it's kind of cool.
Think it's kind of cool, how you like that.
Jerry, did you have anything before we adjourn? No? Okay. Public comment?
No, wait a minute.
No? Not ready yet?
I have a few, hold on a second.
Oh, you have a few?
Yeah, for once. Just letting everybody know, we are going to have a meeting on Tuesday, November 21st at 9:30, due to Thanksgiving being on Thursday. And then I've got two correspondence issues. One is, came in latest from Lorain County Community Action Agency, which all their, it's for their annual community services block grant, which is public can comment on, but application should have been made prior to November 16th, which is today. So, I have it, if anybody wants to look at it. The next thing is Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad Company is informing us that it's upgrading their track by federal law and regulations to 40 miles per hour. They have requested that we notify all townships and municipalities regarding this. They are going to put a press release out due next week, but the track has been listed by public authorities as 40 miles per hour. Over the last 15 years, part of the track has been maintained at 25. This is part of a major capital project upgrading track through seven counties, which would decrease the potential for derailments and improve customer service. Operation Lifesaver will send out press releases and contact the Ohio State Patrol, and the attached system map has been given to me, that's showing something, so, that's all I have.
Maybe we can make those available to Ken Carney and to Ron Twining.
Yes, I have to get copies, I mean, this is the, this is the map here, it's pretty big.
We could have put it on our scanner.
Well, we could have put it up on the screen there, and had it on, on there, so, maybe after the meeting, we can get a shot of it, and how, can edit it in, and we have a procedure for that, so, next time, we'll just have it ready to go.
Well, that's okay, I mean, I just got it today in mail, so it was kind of like, I needed to.
I understand. Can you, can you back up to that Community Action Agency issue for me for, for one moment? I don't think I understood what, what you, why are we getting that, and why, you mentioned something about the 16th.
It's just a survey, if we want to object anything, or have any comments on the organization.
And the public is interested in this, they make comments, but comments regarding this application should have been made prior to November 16th.
And when, and when did they send it to us?
I just received it today.
I've just.
So, that's why.
I resaved one last week.
Each of us got one in the mail. So, I gave mine to Teresa, that way I don't have to keep it. Um, where are we at?
Public comment?
Uh, board correspondence first.
Oh, yes. I move the reading be waived.
I'll second. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
And then public comment.
Morning. Okay?
Yep.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. I'd like to read a statement and ask some questions. Articles have appeared in the newspapers regarding the Commissioners, quote, "taking control of the computer servers containing financial data used by the auditor's office", end quote. Mr. Kahlo has also been quoted as saying that the Commissioners made a, quote, "palsy decision to take them over and provide the access code to everyone who needs it", end quote. Can or will someone explain, one, what are these records, and to whom do these records belong? Two, who does have access and control of these records? Three, who is responsible for the custody and integrity of the records over the long haul?
Well, let's do one at a time. Give me the first one again, Shirley.
What are these records, and whom do they belong?
It is the financial records of the county, under the Oracle system, and I believe they belong to county government. It covers all the departments, and Norris, as the consultant, was to have access for the entire system. The gentleman actually works out of North Carolina, who works with our budget people on the system, and it was locked out. And it's prior to me and Lori being here, so I'm not sure how it was set up as to who had it and didn't have it.
I'm not, what was the name of the company that was locked out?
The consulting group, Norris.
N-O-R-R-I-S?
GN.
Is that how it's spelled? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Well, it sounded in the, in the article as if it was supposed to be local, who was given the access code then, besides their, your consultants?
No, it'd be our county IT department, correct, Jim?
Your county what?
Well, locally, locally, the access is granted to those users, and there's literally hundreds of users on the Oracle system.
I think she's asked about the overall.
Oh, Oracle, not Norris. Is that what you said, Oracle?
Oracle's the system.
Let, let me take you back just a second. Oracle is the platform that we use. Oracle is a software, system, software platform, and you need to manipulate that platform by programming, and Norris was hired back in 2004, the summer of 2004, to install the new Oracle platform. In 2005, we did an ongoing contract with them to provide programmings and services and work on the Oracle system, so that's what Norris does. Norris is a consultant group to work on the Oracle system, and they're under contract with the Commissioners, and they provide services to many departments. The, the level of access that needs to be granted is one that allows them to, to do programming to provide needed reports or services from that platform to various users. And my understanding, because I don't deal with them directly, was that they had on multiple occasions been denied the access they needed to be able to provide those services to some of the Commissioners' departments, and that was relayed to the Board of Commissioners, I don't know, a week or so ago, or maybe two weeks ago, it's been an ongoing issue, I know that, but, once again, I'm not directly involved with those folks, I just get the reports. So, that, that's, that's where the level of access was. And as far as who does it, we have a local rep that comes in that works for Norris, that directly works here, and then there's another off-site rep that, that does computer services all over the world, from his home somewhere in Carolinas.
North Carolina.
It's not, it's not an unusual thing these days. All you got to do is look at JetBlue and find out they don't have a reservation system, that everybody does it on their home computers for them, okay?
Single moms and soccer moms?
Well, the world is certainly flat, and, and those things no longer have to be physically located right there, right in a, in a room someplace, with anybody touching it, they could be anywhere in the world.
Well, my third question, I'm not quite sure whether, that I understand about the access part, but the third question is, who is responsible for the custody and integrity of these records then, over the long haul?
Would that be the data processing board or the board of commissioners?
Pardon me?
Either.
It depends on who has custody of the data. I, I think I would generally agree with Mr. Kahlo's position that they're county records, and everybody contributes to developing those county records. Where, who, who would be responsible, I think would be the person that they're in the custody of at the time.
Well, where does the auditor's office stand in this process then, since the servers and the access has been changed apparently in some way?
They should be seamless, there was no change to any of their operating procedures. That was from our consultants. Nothing changed except the physical location and the master keys to the servers to allow access and deny access.
If, if they hadn't come in and, and looked and saw those servers moved, they would have been doing their work just like they were on Friday, and nothing would have changed. In fact, that, that very information was a recommendation in 2004, we not buy those servers, and that we host that data off-site, and, and have a company perform those services, and perform that backup work, and do all that work for us in 2004. Over, because of different situations at that time, that wasn't done, and I really don't want to get into that, that was another year that was a lot of ongoing strife over Oracle, and who was going to do what and where, and those servers ended up being purchased and put here in the building, but we thought it was more cost-effective at that time, not to buy any of that equipment and have somebody else host it. That's, that's what a lot of big companies do these days, to keep their costs down.
Well, then, in our, in our form of government, who, we don't seem to have, in the county form of government, which I haven't, I haven't had time to go looking up how this works, who is the, the watchdog of the financial records in terms of maintaining their integrity and seeing whether there's misappropriation of funds, or there's whatever might happen to the financial, in, in regard to the financial records?
I don't think I understand.
It wouldn't be the auditor's office, apparently.
Well, the auditor's office is, is responsible for reviewing payments and looking over those records. This, this has been an ongoing issue with, with this board over what proper roles are, and I, I think that they, that there's, I think, one, one thinking on the board of commissioners part, and another thinking on the auditor's part, and that has caused some friction, and it's much like when you have an earthquake, you have two continents meeting, neither one want to move, and then all of a sudden, something shifts, and you get an earthquake.
I think it's pretty simple, government's not that far out. The treasurer collects the beans, the commissioners spend the beans, and the auditor writes the checks to get the beans out. I guess that's the simplest way of explaining it, you know, the process, so I guess everybody would be in charge or overseeing or oversight the checks and balances system of government.
Well, I, I'm not quite sure I understand, I mean, I understand the process, as you've explained it to me, but I don't understand where the real checks and balances is, and I, and I haven't looked it up in Ohio Revised Code to see what the various duties of the, the various entities were talking about. I wasn't, I mean, I know there's been conflict, shall we say, it's been evident sometimes It's been evident sometimes in the way it's been talked about, but I wasn't interested in whether there was conflict. I was interested in what happens to the records and the integrity and custody of the records. Thank you.
I wouldn't term it conflict, I would term it difference of opinion.
Which is okay, makes good government.
Yes, it does.
If we all agreed, things would never change.
We have a new assistant clerk.
Hi, Gary.
I get on TV more.
You've been demoted. Budget cuts, you're assistant clerk.
I'm her shadow today.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by our county administrator.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky, the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash. Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up."
Keep Lorraine County beautiful, put the lid on trash.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Gudard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kinda turn your mood around once they come- when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people, she likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kinda discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kinda hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kinda laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and wanna run around, and I'm always like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, 'cause like sometimes, like when I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kinda like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from- I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, 'cause I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would've happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble, 'cause he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kinda, whoever had him before, they really kinda housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kinda good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not- he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't wanna be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, 'cause puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He- I found him on the internet, actually. He was- he had- they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him, we went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's- he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?", because they all- they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's gonna be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello, my fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Haddaway Street, just south of Illy City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified, so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a special heart medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the special heart tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the US Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham", the suffix meant "home". The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alariah Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village, with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alariah, and the city which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Alariah as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village- Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipard and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. Le Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825 established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name "Le Grange," which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of Le Grange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as Le Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today as the home of the Rochester Historical Society. and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.